To consider which has a budget of approximately nineteen million dollars. That has been presented now for about three to four sessions. It's out there. Basically, the idea that, remember, a budget is not a static document. It can be amended at any time. So what we're hoping is we can move forward with budget and then look at it after a quarter or so to see how our revenue is coming in and potentially make amends where we need to, to move monies around if necessary to cover other issues that we would like to cover. I understand because it is a, the item that it is, it will be treated as an ordinary resolution. So that's the question. How do we treat that?
For the ordinance?
No, for the resolution for the budget.
The budget is just...
Regular, so it's just a majority vote, and that's all that's required, only two budget items. The next one is for the water department budget, which is about 1.8 million. But again, both of those will be simple majority vote. They can be put out without any going through the ordinance steps. So those two will be very straightforward.
Repeat that again. Just a few months ago.
Okay. Both of those will be treated as regular resolutions. They will not be taken through the ordinance steps because of the nature of what they are...
Right, when you say vote, which I...
Number one and number two, the water budget and the city budget. Okay? So that'll be a simple majority vote. Number three, there's been a lot of discussion, so we have finally gotten this on the agenda. Somebody has put in to restrict those funds for a particular use. Before this meeting, we were able to contact Mr. Drake, and he indicated that those funds were given strictly as an open fund to the city to be utilized where they needed in the park area. But again, this is put on there to restrict it to a specific area, so it is a legitimate request that we would have to consider. But because it is a, basically, the way it is, I'm assuming that has to be treated through the steps, or can we go straightforward with it?
I think, I think there's an argument that you can make that because it is an unbudgeted item, that you need to go through unanimous consent process. It's not crystal clear that you're not really spending it tonight. But you are in effect restricting it, but it's not in the budget. I think that you should go through the unanimous consent process for three, for four, and for five, because from my understanding, these are all items that will not be included in the budget, which is being presented as item number one.
Okay. So basically, does everybody understand that clearly?
I agree, and I appreciate that from a consistency standpoint, because I know there's been donations that have come up before that we've taken through that process. So I would agree for consistency that that was...
And then basically, we're looking at that as a straightforward request to earmark that money. It's no longer who said what or how it was presented. That's not the issue. It's where that money will be restricted if we, again, vote this sort of...
I do have a question about that. Who made the, who actually heard it from Dicky Drake?
The mayor, myself.
I made the call because we got another, we got another claim of credit for, I guess, today.
Okay.
From another council member. So that puts several out there that are claiming credit for it. So I just called Dicky Drake. Steve was in my office, and Patricia was in my office. I had him on speakerphone, and I just asked him if I, I said, "Look, I hate to have to, I hate to have to make this call," but I said, "There's so many people out there I want to claim credit for. I just need to know where you intended for the money to go." And he said, "The city budget for parks."
Fair enough.
So again, it's open, but this is having to be the first request for something related to parks.
Yeah, but this specifically states construction, to the construction, a dog, well, of a, of a dog park, but construction of a dog park in the city of Lyndale, which really not conducive for not what Mr. Drake really stated it was for.
He didn't say it was for the dog park. He didn't say it was for the ballpark. He says it's for parks, which the dog park falls under the arm of parks.
And I'm requesting that it be allocated towards the dog, construction of the dog park.
Okay. That's, that's, I really wish we would get a little bit more clarification on that. I don't mind money going towards a dog park. I have no issue with it. But since we're in a gray area without Mr. Drake here, Representative Drake, and I'm getting emails that I just saw not too long ago with strictly for parks, which I do agree is part of the park.
Right.
But this specifically states construction.
Construction of a dog park.
This, this says specifically, construction, a dog park, construction of a dog park. So basically, this is telling me we're only using these funds for the construction of a dog park. Is that not correct?
That's certainly what it looks like to me.
That's what I...
What I was going to add is that regardless of what Mr. Drake verbally tells anybody, including the mayor or anybody else sitting in this room, or anybody else, unless the funds were restricted clearly when they came to the city and the city accepted the funds subject to that restriction, I believe the council can do with those funds whatever you want to do with those funds. It's, it's, it's the council's discretion at this point, in my opinion. And I certainly think that using them for the construction of a dog park is a valid use, should a majority of the council choose to do so. It's now just a matter of what do you want to do with the money. It didn't come in restricted or contingent by my understanding.
I would feel a little bit more comfortable donation of seventy-five-hundred dollars to the parks, to the Parks Department of the city of Lyndale. Now, if we use it for dog, for the dog park, it's already ruled. I mean, I, I don't have any issue.
The money's already been given for use in the parks.
That's right.
All right. I am requesting that that use in the parks be earmarked for a construction of the dog park as part of the Parks Department.
Right, right. So, and that's a legitimate request, but the council just has to act on it now and decide whether they want to go that way or not. I'm, you know, I'm not interested in talking to Dicky Drake anymore about his contributions because I think we've warned him out on it already.
And I think he was very clear, so. It's at the discretion of the councils to how they're going to spend the funds within the structure of the park system.
But it's on your agenda. You get to vote on it and decide how, where it goes.
So it's a clarifying question, Joe. Are you, are you just asking that the money be deposited into parks and then it be a parks expense, whatever it goes to?
Right.
What, um...
That's, that's great.
I don't know, you have another way to ask us what difference this may...
Yeah, because I'm, because I'm, it's a gray area as far as what Mr. Drake is saying to what I guess Council Bearden is requesting for specifically to go to dog, you know. So I want to make sure that we're applying those funds to the area which he says parks, which I do understand the dog park, which is a park.
Right.
And Council Bearden is asking for it specifically to parks, but that wasn't the request of Mr. Drake when he donated.
Well, when he gave it to us, he didn't care what we did with it as far as the parks were concerned.
Well, do we know where he...
Now, this is the decision that we have to make, that's where we want to play.
So are you saying that, say it does just get put into parks in this phase, okay? Are you saying that the next council meeting, you would like to have an agenda that says, or I guess this would be how it would work, is that the, the source of funds for the construction of the dog park will be seventy-five-hundred dollars from parks budget? Is that how you see that moving?
Yeah, I don't know.
Because it sounds like we're just kind of, just going to kind of park it there, and we might not even do anything with it.
Yeah, but then, as far as what we're voting on tonight, we can't use seventy-five-hundred dollars. Seventy-five-hundred dollars is strictly set aside for the construction of a dog park.
Right, right.
Specifically.
Right.
So that means even if the dog park doesn't come into existence, we can't touch this fund.
We can go back and earmark it if we decide not to build a dog park.
Okay, any more discussion on that particular issue?
Yeah.
All right. And any discussion on the earmarking of lodging tax?
I don't like the earmarking piece. I guess from a, from a, from a delegate standpoint, I would just, I wish that we could include that percentage to go towards, in the budget, to go towards events, basically.
Do we know how much money is in there?
Yeah, I sent an email, uh...
In which...
That 1% that we're talking about?
Do we know how much that 1% would cost if we...
No, I mean, what is in, I mean, because we're talking about the...
We don't have that, we don't have that fund.
Okay.
No, that's why he's asking for the...
I'm sorry, what I meant to be, what is the number that that 1% would generate as far as these items that he's asking for?
Last year, I want to say that the lodging that we received was about four hundred and twenty thousand dollars. The percentage to calculate the lodging is 7%. So that would equate to about six million dollars in grocery receipts. So if you take 1% of six million, you would set aside sixty thousand dollars. Yeah, about four or sixty. I remember last time...
Fifty thousand's a little too much to pull out of the city's budget just for events when we...
Listen, let me, let me explain. A while back, when we initially, and Council Bearden, you know about this.
I agree, it's my vote.
We, we specifically, in the budget, we had lodging tax, and we had the 1%. That's how it was broken out in our budget, okay? We did not use, at the time, I think it was like forty thousand dollars, that 1% generated about forty thousand dollars at this time. Yeah, I understand it may be sixty now. We didn't use all of the forty thousand dollars. I don't even think, we probably needed to use half of it. So just because it's sixty thousand and set aside with the 1% sales tax, that doesn't mean we're using sixty thousand dollars for events.
But it's still sitting there, and you can't use it for anything else. If you don't use it, it just sits there and builds up for the next year after year.
I would like to caution the council, Dave. You restrict these funds, and we're just using, say, sixty thousand dollars for the next year, then you're also going to create a sixty thousand dollar deficit in the budget. Because if you restrict these funds, then you have to move them out of the budget and put them in a restricted fund. So that revenue can no longer be counted towards the budget that we have tonight. So you would create a deficit, or you would create a budget that is no longer balanced if you agreed to move those funds to a restricted fund.
Okay. Is there a saying earmark 1% of lodging to special events, or earmark 1% or a certain amount from lodging tax? Can we just say not to exceed X amount of dollars for special events in the city of Lyndale, or not to exceed eighteen thousand dollars from the lodging tax budget to city council discretionary spending? Can we just say that instead?
Well, any, any amount that you move, because the budget had a surplus of five hundred and sixty-three dollars. So any amount that you move that is higher than five hundred and sixty-three dollars is going to create a deficit in the budget unless you find some other expense that you can reduce to be able to offset.
Let me, let me, let me make a quick comment. I sent an email to, I know the finance chair, I sent an email to James. I even read off the information I'm sending you looking for now in my email file of some scenarios that we can do, or that we can look at as far as moving money from one line item to another, based upon the end result in 2018, and I have the budget right here, the 2018 actual. Based on the 2018 actual, I asked, could we move some of those funds to offset what we were at, what, you know, to some other areas like education funding, discretionary events, move some of the money that we had from our actual over to 2019 and include those amounts in those particular line items? The email that I sent, I think we went over that.
Well, you, you did send me an email, but it, to me, the email didn't read that way. And then you and I also had a discussion that you told me that you were fine with everything and that I really did not need to respond to the email because I had answered all of your questions.
James, I don't think all of those, all of those questions were answered.
Well, I'm just going by the conversation we had in the office two council meetings ago when we were getting ready to discuss it, and you stopped by and you asked me, "I received your list," because we were supposed to have the list in by Tuesday, and the list came in on Sunday. And you and I sat there at a conversation, and you told me that you were fine with it with the answers that I had given you up to that point.
Okay. As far as the answers that I was given at that particular moment, no, I don't recall all of the answers that you gave me in reference to the email that I sent to you. And I got it right here. It was on October the sixth, October the fourteenth. I sent it to your date is Friday. And we went over it, a portion of it during one of the council meetings in October.
Yeah, I even went over, I went over a portion of it...
Yeah.
...in the council meeting because I was going through to recall some of the things that I remembered. But when I received that on the fourteenth, those questions were supposed to be sent in that Tuesday before that council meeting, for me to be able to put those together with any other questions that council members had pertaining to the budget, so everybody could get the same thing at the same time. And that's why I'm saying when you and I had the discussion, you told me that you were fine with what I had shared with you. Now, we didn't talk about moving any funds around, but we did talk about some of the questions that you sent me, because some of them are really not questions. I mean, if you send me a question and it says, "What about the water department?" And then you give me three question bars, to me, that's not really a question that I could answer, because it's just saying, "What about the water department?" And three questions. So that's why I thought we had, I had satisfied that for you based on the discussion that we had.
No, not, not all the questions that was on here, no. No, not all the questions, because I had some scenarios on here, in a sense where moving some of the money from one, one line item to another.
But that discussion...
So that wasn't even, that wasn't even a discussion that we had. You may have answered some of these questions that was on here.
Right.
But as far as moving monies from one line item to another, we didn't talk about that.
Well, I didn't, I didn't...
We went over, hold on, hold on a second, hold on a second. We went over some of these during our work session, but we didn't go over, and I broke it down into, into segments, water, 911, court, revenue, I broke all of it down. We didn't go over all of these scenarios that I mentioned in this particular email. You may have answered some of the questions that I had as far as, okay, can we take some of the money out of lodging and use it for A, B, or C, or whatever the case may be. But some of these scenarios that's on here, we didn't go through all of these when we had our meeting in October, after the fourteen.
I will tell you why I didn't go through all of the scenarios, because it really wasn't a conversation for you to give me the numbers for me to go change the line items. But that was a discussion that the full council was supposed to have, and amidst of you all having that conversation, you all would agree to what you would like for me to go back and change and to submit you another budget. The way that the budget process works is that I create the document, I give the document to the mayor, the mayor gives the document to the council. Once the council gets the document, it's the council's responsibility to go through the document, to be able to identify areas that you want to increase, decrease, if it fits with the mission and the vision of the city. That's you all's job to do that. Once you identify that, and you all agree what you all want me to change, then I can now go back and input those numbers into that budget to bring it back to you, to let you know what has transpired since we have changed those numbers. But I can't change those numbers once they've been submitted to the council.
Mr. President, I want to jump in. He's exactly right in what he just said there, and that's what we have done. We're not going to change the budget based on one council member's suggestion or question.
Let me, let me, let me...
I'm going to finish. I didn't ask a question. I didn't ask a question. What he said, the process is exactly the process. We would never do it. I don't care which one of you. If you say, "Don't change this," we're not going to change it once we present it to you. That is a decision for you all to make. We have a debate at that point. We'll make, we'll, we'll have that debate. If you suggest something that we know is not going to work, we'll let you know that. But it is not our job to go in and, and allow one or two council members, it's a council of the whole here, there are five members of you generally, there's, there's five elected officials, four of you here tonight, and that's your job to, to do that, not the city clerk's job to do that.
Response, quick response, Council member. One, no, not one council member can say, "Hey, we need to change A, B, or C." In my discussion, I mentioned that I sent these questions, one, some questions, some statements, to the chair and also to James as far as for a discussion, not to change, not, not saying we need to change A, B, or C. It was for a, it was a question, it was for a discussion. So that's one. Two, I understand how the budget works. I've been here a long time, and I understand how the budget works. So I don't need an impromptu 101 class to figure out how the budget works. I was finance chair for several years, so I do understand that. My case was, the, the email that I sent was for a discussion among council members. What I said previously, we stated, we, we mentioned some of the, some of the things as far as what was on this email, but we didn't go through or discuss many of these items that were listed. That's the only thing I'm trying to say. That's it. We didn't, we didn't go through all of them as far as moving some monies around to make sure we have money in the budget to cover items such as education, discretionary, events, et cetera. That's the only thing I, basically, that's the only thing I was saying. Can't a one, one council member change anything? It takes a majority. So I don't even know why that statement was made, but that's the point I was trying to make.
I'll take the floor, Joe, at this point, and just make a comment. I opened this session with the comment that what is important tonight is to get a general operating budget passed and in place. At the discretion of this council, we can take things like if you needed discretionary funds at some point, you can bring that forward as a resolution, put it before the whole council, earmark the funds from one location to another as we're into the budget. So I'm just saying, the flexibility is there. What's more important tonight is the general budget being in place, not necessarily going back and trying to say we need funds in this particular area for this particular thing. If there's a city event that's worthwhile, let a council person sponsor it, bring it forward with an amount, let the council consider it and where that money's going to come from. But again, that's my comment with that. Is there any other particular discussion on anything on the agenda tonight?
I do have one question.
Yes, sir.
In, in regards to what James said about the 1% lodging, I understand it's in the revenue portion of the budget, so I understand about that. But when you look at, when you actually look at the numbers, there isn't an entry, there isn't an entry for the 18 budget, and there's not an entry for the 19 budget. So are you actually factoring that 1% in, because I don't see an notation for it?
Factoring it in.
Unless I'm just missing something.
Okay, factoring it in.
As far as income. As you mentioned lately...
It's, in the total lodging is 7%.
Okay.
So there's not a 6% and a 1% line item, it's a 7% line item. So everything you see there is what is generated by the lodging that comes into the city of Lyndale.
And I can understand, this might just be an outdated line item, additional 1% lodging tax revenue, no numbers across the, all columns.
What number is that, council side?
Um, it's on the revenue pages, oh-one dash four thousand dash thirty-one four seventy. Because I do see, I, I see a lodging tax in there, you, 2018 budget, three seventy, 2019 budget, four and a quarter, 18 actual, four forty-two. But as far as the 1% that I believe you guys are talking about, I don't see any numbers there.
Yes, because 1% is not broken out, it's in the, it's in the 7%.
Gotcha, okay.
It's in the total line item.
That was messing me up a little bit. I apologize.
Okay, no, that's... And if there was something on that line item, it would have been a subtraction instead of being an addition, because you're actually taking that out and restricting it. That's why I said that if you decide to put 1% or 1/2%...
Now I get you now.
You're still taking sixty thousand, or you're taking thirty thousand dollars out of the budget to restrict it for events.
I get you now.
Or either, you know, somebody could bring it back for specific events, say, maybe five thousand dollars, have a vote at the council, take it out of that 1%, if that's appropriate.
Yeah, what's the difference going, putting it in here now?
They call change, strict it.
No, we're not earmarking. No, we're not earmarking. We're not earmarking. We set aside a certain amount.
Yeah, but if we, if you vote on the resolution tonight, depending on which word you like, earmark or restricted, they're both the same. That means that you, you can't use it. That means that the council has the ability to restrict funds, but then the state also has the ability to restrict funds. The only difference is the council can move their restrictions. When you have state restrictions, you can't remove those restrictions. You just have to flow with those.
I didn't, I didn't realize that that 1% was, I get what you're saying now, and I understand how moving that out would create a deficit in that budget.
Well, it's 1% off of the grocery receipts, not 1% off of the amount that's collected.
I understand now.
That's what the difference is. Being what was collected, then you're talking about, if it's four hundred and twenty thousand, you're talking about 1% of that, which is four thousand and two hundred dollars.
Right.
Okay. For the sake of the vote tonight, which it looks like this just needs to come to a vote and be resolved, do we need to change the word earmark? Is there going to be a suggestion when we put the agenda out for approval? Or are we going to leave it as is?
I mean, sorry.
So leave it as is, all right?
I mean, you could say that, you could say restrict, but it's, at the end of the day...
It's pretty sound, it seemed like, you know, it's put out there, it don't matter anyway.
All right. Since we have a little time, although we'll have an opportunity to repeat any comments from anyone in the audience at this point on anything we've been discussing tonight. Please, just start up here.
Seven five hundred fifty-seven, twenty-nine, Delmont Drive. I attended your last city council meeting where you were talking about the budget, and I see that you're now voting on a budget. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, at the last city council meeting, Mr. Stewart noted that probably a designate of the city's deficit year in 2018 would be a little under seven hundred thousand dollars. Is that correct?
Approximately.
Around that amount? And we're going to have to dip into our reserves to take care of that deficit, which is going to lower our reserves. And I'm, I'm worried about another Sams type of scenario. Those reserves are for emergencies, and we're dipping into it to offset the deficit. We now have a budget of a little over nineteen million. How much of a surplus is that budget showing that year in 2019?
Is it five sixty-two, James?
Five hundred and sixty-two.
Five hundred and sixty-two dollars.
And that includes all of the bond debt and everything.
Yeah, that's everything.
That's everything.
So five hundred and sixty-two dollars. And the budget that you, that you're looking at approving now is a little over nineteen million. So the next question is, does it include, if you're going to earmark something or designate something, that means that you're going to lower, because it's not currently budgeted, right? The 1% of the hotel or whatever you want to designate it for, that's already allocated in the budget.
That's what James is saying, that's...
So that's what my concern is. I mean, if you take from Peter to pay Paul, you're going to wind up still, and it doesn't make sense, because a plan is for what the department heads, the mayor meeting with them, or what the city is going to need to operate, to take care of services for its citizens, property taxpayers, and so on. You just pass an occupational tax, you know, which is going to help the city, we're going to be a little under, a little over five hundred in the black according to the plan. So if you go in and start shuffling money around, that's not really a good idea. And I'm asking you all, please, go with what you've got planned here. Don't start moving money for things that are not budgeted, because we can't afford that right now. We need to get out of the debt that we're in. We're going to be a little over five hundred dollars. Let's focus on, as some council members mentioned at the last... Let's focus on, as some council members mentioned at the last meeting, on building up those reserves because we can't play with the people's money. We trust y'all to do a good job and be a good stewards of our money and we need to build these up. So I'm asking you, please don't do this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Mr. Shaw, will you still?
Mr. President, I got six oh two, it's time to start our regular council meeting.
Regular council, six thirty.
Six, six thirty?
Yes, sir. You did that last night, dear. Thank you.
You got a good change in things, I can hear that.
Mr. Shaw, thank you.
Thank you very much. I'm thirty-eight forty-eight Rock Ridge Road and I've been on the council before. I've seen the scenarios that we've gone through on the council. And it's, it's a travesty right now because we've got, you cannot pass something and then change something after you pass it. A budget is a budget and it's an argument afterwards if you want to pass something. And I, I'm giving everybody a difficult situation on this because if you pass a budget, you've got to try to follow the budget. And if you don't follow the budget, then everybody gets mad. And nobody really knows what the budget is right now. I don't know what it is. So nobody in this audience, except for you all on the council, know what the budget is. How are we supposed to argue the situation or understand it even? So we're sitting here and saying, look, we'd like to have a festival, we'd like to have some other things. We don't even know if that's included in here. Obviously, it's not. So the point I'm making is, I think it's ridiculous that you can try to pass a budget tonight because of the dissension I hear going on. And we need to talk about it more amongst ourselves and give us here an opportunity to say something about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
James, is our budget and our ordinances and our agenda not posted on the bulletin board outside anymore? I didn't check.
No.
It is on the bulletin board, they were painting the hallway.
It's painted, it's totally.
But if you go out there and look on the bulletin board now, you will see the council expenditures for the council meeting, which you all get every council meeting to approve. You will also see the agenda that's out there for tonight. And you will also see the meeting notices for any meeting that takes place from the CDA to the IDB to any organization that is a public, is a public meeting, it's posted on that board.
So everything including our budgets out there for anybody to look at?
No, the budget's not included out there because you all had approved it.
James, I have a question. Has, has the, historically throughout every council that has been up here, has the, has the budget been accessible to any, any, anybody from the public while it's been deliberated on? Or are we failing to do something that no one else is doing?
Let me, let me answer that.
Okay.
Let me check because I've heard.
Thank you.
So I get tired here, the stories around it. This count, this, this city's never posted a budget online until the last two years since this administration started. So I don't want to hear the griping about it. When John Shaw was on the council, it was never published. When Bobby was, Bobby Joe was on there fifteen years ago, it was never published or however long he's been on here. But the last two years, the budget, the approved budget has been, we don't put working drafts out and don't have any intention to. And we checked and found one other city in this whole region that, that puts their draft budget out. One out of what, twenty-seven, thirty municipalities around? It just doesn't make any sense. But, but this administration, since you all started this term, we have been putting it out and we have been having monthly financial reports and the clerk is presenting to you and that information is available. And I will also say that this budget has been discussed since September in every single meeting we've had. So that's at least four meetings it has. So if you're really interested, and I'll speak to John's comment directly, if you're really interested, show up. It's been out here for two months, over two months now, show up. And we've discussed and we've had work session after work session. And, and, and then you get down to the point and you say, well, this is ridiculous. We haven't had any chance to know what. What's ridiculous is not participating in the process if you think it's important.
Let me, I want to make a comment about the budget process since a lot of citizens are not aware of how the budget process works because they haven't been on the councils to see how it works. Money is moved around. There are some places where there, the actual is way more than was budgeted for nineteen. So basically, you can move money around to make a balanced budget. So that's been, that, that's been done forever. So you can't say, if you don't know the process, you can't say that money can't be moved around because that's how you balance a budget. You move it from one line item to the next as long as you have a balanced budget. So, you know, that's been done forever and a day.
My understanding is they can't be moved if it's earmarked. Is that correct?
On, on a, on a basic budget as far as making sure it's balanced, based on the actuals that you have, you can move money around based on the actual and what you're budgeting for the following year. So if you have an actual that you have made X amount of dollars for, way over the amount of money that you're expecting and then you move it as far as making a, an amount as far as what you're going to be the actual for the following year, if there's a difference, you can take some of those funds and move it somewhere else in another line item. So we're not talking about earmarking. We're not talking about earmarking here. We're just talking about using some of the funds from lodging, if that's specific, if we want to get specific, moving the money from some of lodging to pay for some of these expenses right here. I mean, to cover some of these expenses that's listed on the agenda.
And I, I mean, I agree with Councilman Wilson on that. The only thing that I was saying, if you move something, you've got to take something away from somebody else. That's the only thing that I'm saying. You can move money, we can move revenue, we could go redo all these budgets and move everything around. But at the end of the day, we only have nineteen billion dollars in revenue. So you still got to come up within those boundaries. You can't play outside of those boundaries because you will not have a balanced budget. So you can move money around, but even the city's financial policy says that if you create a new expense, you either have to find additional revenue or you have to reduce an expense in another area where that new expense becomes new. That's the city's financial policy.
Now, do we think we've had enough discussion in this and when we get to regular council, we'll be able to get everything up for vote tonight? Okay?
I do want to state that the email that you sent me, Bobby Joe, the way it was headed up, it was, it was sent to James with kind of an addressing there. That's why I really didn't respond on it because it looked like you were asking him the questions and he would be the one that I would go to to seek the answers personally as well. So I was waiting on that discussion to go there, that's why I didn't say anything about it.
Yeah, and in this email, I did include, I will share this with other councils as well, to jumpstart a conversation of the passing of the budget. Hopefully, monies could be shifted to accommodate some of the items listed below. And let me give you just a, just two examples. In the twenty eighteen budget for consulting services, we budgeted three seventy-four. Where in the two, twenty nineteen budget, in the twenty nineteen budget, we budgeted four nineteen. So why couldn't we reduce it to four hundred thousand and use the nineteen thousand for somewhere else? You know, that's all I'm saying. And I told James, the budget, the budget that we have, the budget that we have now, I, James did a fantastic job, a fantastic job. It has nothing to do with how many budget. This is the fact of just moving some of the monies around in human resource expense. We budgeted a hundred and fifty thousand in twenty eighteen, now we're budgeting a hundred and sixty-five. So, I mean, fifteen thousand dollars.
But Councilman Wilson, let me, let me express to you why though. So, you know, we've already read Facebook today. I try to stay off Facebook, but sometimes.
I don't get it.
To Facebook. But the reason that you have that increase from four hundred and nineteen thousand dollars, we can't move the money because those are things that we are obligated to pay. I mean, we are obligated, we're under contract to pay individual contractors.
Those, those are just examples. I just, I just chose to.
Yeah, I just wanted to share with you that that's, those are things that we have agreed to pay. So even though there's an increase, we can't go in and adjust them because we have agreed to, contractually, we have to pay those things. The one that you mentioned about the human resource, which is a hundred and sixty-five thousand dollars this year and it was a hundred and fifty thousand dollars the year before, we have no control over that unless we are not a member of the personnel board. Because they set the rate and send the bill to the municipalities for us to pay for it. So even though it's fifteen thousand dollars higher, we can't send them a hundred and fifty thousand when they send us a bill for a hundred and sixty-five thousand. So there are a lot of things that you may see that there are increases, say, oh, we can move money, we can do that. But contractually or either because it is a no-award obligation that the C is under, there's nothing that we can do. Ninety-five percent of the money is already determined where it's going before we get started. So you can take five percent out of nineteen million and if you want to have discretionary and move money around, you basically got, what, eight hundred thousand dollars to move around out of nineteen million.
Can we move on with that discussion? Do know that in your hand, excuse me, in your, in your hand, you do have a copy of an overview that's more of an outline, an RFP for the ballpark issue that we were promised. This is not the full fleshed-out document, but it does give you the essentials that was handed to you tonight in room. This was for us to review as promised. So it is in hand, please go over it and that discussion will come at a later time.
I think something was missing. We have one item, one item that's missed it on the, missing on the scope of work.
What's that?
Tell them where you're going.
No, you go ahead.
Oh, okay. It was a multi-use facility, a building, like a multi-use field, it was a multi-use facility.
How big of a, what are you talking about?
It's just within, it's just within the factory.
Just factory.
From an architect standpoint.
That's a pick and choose option once you get your RFP back. Okay, just here.
Y'all know who I am and where I live. Anyway, I was just wondering about the budget for abatements. It's been twenty-five thousand dollars the last couple of years and we can't abate but about two houses. I mean, if they have to be torn down. We've got a list as long as my arms of, of things, places people have come to us wanting us to either tear down or make the owners fix it up or whatever. But it takes at least ten thousand dollars just to tear down a house. And so I don't know how much I'll have abated, I mean, how much I'll have on there for abatement, but I would like to see more than twenty-five thousand dollars. And I don't know the process, I, you know, I don't know, but that's just a question and a recommendation. Thank you.
I thought, was twenty-five again? I'm trying to find it again.
Twenty-five.
It's twenty-five, okay. Now.
Which one is in?
It should be in either six sixteen or six fifteen. It should be forced again.
We've been pumping things through courts and a few, a few times in order to kind of force the owners to do things legally without really going to abatement in a few instances. Is that accurate?
That's still happening.
I'm sorry, sir?
That is still happening.
Okay.
Taking them to the court.
Does that make, does that seem to be making a difference as far as abatement is concerned?
It's making a small difference. Problem is, is finding the owners. Most of them move out of state and let the property in the house that's sitting in is hard to serve them.
Thank you. How many do you have on your list now, sort of thing?
On the property abatement is about ten. Weed abatement is probably about the same one.
One last comment, please.
I'd like to recognize when we get, if you got the next item, the car sheet, something you want to share with people if, if we've got time.
Please.
Okay. Chief?
Something I just kind of want to bring up before the next meeting that we want to try to do is to help our response and the aid that we get. Of course, when we get a call and especially fire calls, we're going to call other jurisdictions to come help just due to the size of the department and on the personnel that we have. Many cities enter into automatic agreements with neighboring jurisdictions, which means that once we set up this agreement that if we get, we'll say, a residential structure fire, the dispatch is going to automatically call this jurisdiction between a unit and a certain number of personnel to help us. What this also does is for our ISO rating, it gives us more personnel that are responding to fires, which can help us get more points for ISO, to lower that ISO rating. I've already kind of, you know, spoken with Leeds and Cabo Valley and Trustful and they all want to enter into some kind of agreement for us. And it's, it's, they would come help us and we would go help them. Like I said, either way, when we need the help, we call. It's just a delay in when we get people responding. If it's an automatic agreement, as soon as that call comes in through our dispatch, they're going to call those jurisdictions and get them coming automatically. And on paper, what it does, like I said, is the main, the big part is ISO and it helps for, we have, whereas now we have three engines and nine personnel responding with those agreements. If we have agreements with Leeds and Cabo Valley, that adds two more fire trucks and at least four more personnel for us to add on to that roster and try ISO. Plus, it gives us an opportunity under the agreements to train together and get those areas. Like we'll just, I'll say Overton Road, for example. Cabo Valley has things on Overton Road where their next closest station is out at two eighty and they have, they have the, the station at Rex Lake and then the next is on two eighty. Our engine too can get there to help them a lot quicker. So that's where it kind of, you know, and if it gets to, it's an area that we're not sure if it's, if it's Iredale or Cabo Valley, doesn't matter because we're both coming anyway. So I spoke with Leslie, we're talking about next council, probably possibly bringing forward a resolution that would authorize me and the mayor and the attorney, city attorney, to negotiate and, and agree, and come in agreement with the jurisdictions to be able to do that. So I kind of wanted to bring that up. I want to give some, some heads up on it and get any input that you might have or what you think about it. Lots of places do it. Cabo Valley in particular is probably one of the biggest ones. They're actually in ISO two, which is one below us, but they have mutually agreements with Estavia, Birmingham. They have, it shows they have nineteen people responding to fires. Their department is not that big. So it'll be a huge benefit for the city to be able to do this. And I'll, I'll say, we tried to, we tried to talk to Iredale when I was at Leeds about the interstate. As you know, our westbound coverage on our twenty, we have to go all the way down to Leeds and come back. In an agreement, we would be, we still respond, but Leeds would respond that westbound and we could cover their eastbound and we get people there quicker. And I think what this does is it, it helps the people that we're responding to, to get them help quicker. So the input you guys have on that, is that something that you guys would be more for us having a resolution to do that where we could negotiate these, these agreements and be able to do that?
Then basically these are scratch my back, I'll scratch you agreements, there's no money to change this.
No, there's, there's, there's no money at all.
So it's not an agreement, you got to put a pool of money in?
No, sir. It's just, it's a resource pool is what it is. And the ISO, they, even if we say we mutually label this department, they don't look at that if you get people because it's not something that's an automatic thing. We have to ask and we're, we're going to ask for these people either way. Just like the, you know, I bring, we've had Iredale come out when I was at Leeds is because we called him. But if we have them automatically coming, they're, they're coming when we're coming and if we don't have a delay in response, then we get more units there.
Who's responding to our citizens on the Rex Lake Road area now?
The, the, the properties that are in Iredale, we respond to. But more than likely, because of where they're at, Cabo Valley is going to get that call too.
They have a station down there close to them.
Yes, sir. And that's kind of, that's kind of where that agreement would come in. They, they have a transport unit, they can get that transport unit across the street. And if we have that agreement and we say, in this area closest to your station, you'll send your transport unit, we don't have to wait on an RPS unit to come from five, ten minutes away. It's, it's just a better service for the, for the city.
So this was really for your information to let you know that the next meeting will be bringing this back to you. If you'll be mulling it over, if you have questions, let me know and we'll, we'll respond to that. But we'll have something on paper for you at the next meeting.
I have, and I'm very sure, I have, the template that you and I discussed, I have a blank template if they want to see it as far as what the agreement would look like to show that there's no money or anything like that that would be changed.
Listen, if you get that to the city clerk, we'll just. We'll send that, if you'll get that to the city clerk, we'll just send that out to the council membership.
Um, forgive me, but I, I'd like to apologize for a little bit of a statement. I recognize what the mayor said regarding a statement of a budget situation. I was not able to unfortunately attend most of the budgetary meetings beforehand. I, I would like to see those informed of, of the minutes, are they posted? Where we can, unable to attend and have other businesses here to take care, to follow up on, you know, it, it's just...
That right behind you is posted on Facebook within, uh, so you can see the entire meeting from front to back, no questions and all the detail.
That's unofficial.
That's unofficial.
That's unofficial.
That's unofficial, but it is a record to get the gist of what went on in the meeting.
There was a meeting, I understand that, but was there state, what was in the meeting? That's what I understand.
Well, unless, I mean, unless there's an action taken, then there's nothing to, I mean, if it was just a discussion...
But no, no committee is going to take the action.
Well, but that's what minutes are, minutes are not transcribing the meeting, minutes are taking the actions that were part of the meeting. If there are no actions that are part of the meeting, then there's nothing to...
So, so, so there's no way you, I have to attend the meeting to understand what maybe have happened?
You can watch the video on this, if, if you're not to the video, all of these meetings.
Almost personally, all of these.
You're right, and, and I think he's done a great job, and I appreciate it. I wish I had the time to sit down and listen to much of it, and many of it, but I, I had, and many of us have it, and I appreciate the, the efforts the mayor has done as far as the budgetary situation is concerned. I just wish that, that, uh, we could have, uh, some more segregation in the budget of how things are being spent, because once a budget is set, I understand, it's set. So, I recognize when I was chairman, I still am, I think, chairman of the tree commission, you know, I had to get on the budget and get a particular situation stated there to where I didn't get any money, otherwise I had to go through the issue that you have to go through for any type of event, event situation. So, uh, it, it's a, it's just a sad case of me not keeping up with everything, I'm sorry.
Okay.
We've got time for the discussion, item number six?
If you want to, we've got six, four, five, six minutes left?
Let me say something very quick before we go to item number six, if you don't mind. Um, I understand our meetings are recorded, but we need to move into times, you know, and when I say that, we use, we need to use the technology that we have, we need to do a Facebook Live. Most of the council meetings that, that I know, um, have a Facebook Live. That way, nothing can be distorted, nothing can be changed, or whatever the case may be. Everyone is using Facebook Live. So, we need to consider moving with the times as far as using the technology, as far as what it's used for, and that way, I think we could, you know, kind of move in a direction where we need to. We have a Facebook page, so I don't know why we couldn't do a Facebook Live.
Thank you. Councilperson Bearden, you have another comment?
Uh, yeah, I'm look, looking over the, uh, item number six, it's change, making changes to, uh, section three, one thirty-nine, uh, the only major change I saw was requiring, um, obtaining permits for the hens and animals that are already, uh, in the, uh, in the, the ordinance to, and why are we requiring permits now?
The accessory building permit is for the coop.
Okay.
Um, so, um, basically, the reason, it reads the way it is, is we had to put an exception in the ordinance around fowl, so that's, that's why you saw some red letter text in there in regards to the ordinance, and then the permit is for the, um, is for the, uh, the coop essentially. There's some parameters in there, so basically, um, you have to make sure that your accessory building is X, Y, Z, um, away from, I think it's what, was it a hundred feet? Okay, a hundred feet away from your neighbor essentially.
Now, this is a, a permit just for the building, a one-time permit to build it?
Correct.
Is that not already...
I might infer to Charles, you're going to say, well, I think the way we set it up is you get the permit for the coop. It's not, you don't, it's not something that has to be renewed on an annual basis or anything, to give the permit to build a coop.
Do we not already have to buy a permit when we build a, a, a building on our property?
Yes, um, you don't.
Wait.
Um, but with this coop, um, ordinance, well, in ordinance, whatever we're calling it, you do have to permeate it, but it's a one-time permit. And basically what happens is, is like, go out and inspect the coop and, uh, ensure it's tied down, then it meets code.
But anytime we put a, put up an additional building on our property, we have to buy permits, correct? Why would we need another ordinance to, to require permits for something that permits are required for anyway?
And which is asking for a permit?
I, I think, Councilperson Bearden, the main thing was that we're only amending two, part of the two ordinances in our zoning book to allow this. The zoning board sent that forward as a, the requirements and the exact things that a person has to do, such as they have to, uh, certify that they have had training in raising chickens. They have to certify a lot of things and sign the document itself. So the reason for also permitting the building was because, uh, there are certain requirements out that's been placed on that particular building and the keeping of those chickens, like where the feed's got to be stored, how the feed's got to be stored, how, uh, excrement has to be taken away and how it has to be stored. There are a lot of things in the accessory building permit itself that are not any, in, any of our other permits.
Okay.
Thank you.
That's, that's all the meeting's done. Thank you.
We've got one minute, um, so nothing else to be said, could we adjourn, please?
Most of us adjourn.
Right there? Making a motion? Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, motion carries. As soon as this hits six thirty, we'll get into our regular meeting, so you've got a quick minute or less. Officially called the meeting door, and welcome everyone, and thank you for being here, and hope everyone's looking forward to a good Thanksgiving. Appreciate you taking time out of your busy schedule to be here. Uh, Councilor Spivey?
Present.
Councilor Bearden?
Yo.
Councilor Wilson?
Present.
And myself, present. Okay, if, you know, I like to put forward on the minutes from the last council meeting, on the regular council meeting.
I make a motion that the, the reading of the minutes be dismissed with since each member of council has received a copy and that they be approved as submitted.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. And Councilor Spivey?
Yes, sir. I make a motion for the approval of payment of current bills in the amount of one hundred twenty-two thousand, seven hundred ninety dollars and twenty-five cents. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Any professional consultants reports? All right, and mayor?
Uh, no report.
No report tonight, thank you. And, uh, chief, you have one comment to make, please?
Yes, just two things. Uh, Lieutenant Green, uh, from the fire department has set up with Mitchell's Place, uh, and on Monday, uh, we're actually going to go out and take some trucks and, and let the, the kids there get to see that and play with the trucks, and, uh, we're actually going to partner up with them, uh, beginning of next year to do for Autism Awareness Month. We're going to sell T-shirts, uh, to support that cause, so, so be looking for that, uh, on our Facebook page when those, uh, we'll probably be taking, uh, early orders for that and kind of pre-order, so, uh, pretty, going to be pretty neat shirts, so it's going to be a, a pretty cool thing. And, um, there was also, uh, Serv Pro, the, uh, company that comes out and cleans after fires and stuff. They did a golf tournament that two of our, uh, firefighters played in, and it was like ten different fire departments. Um, they raised money to go towards, uh, money for fire departments to buy things with, and, uh, they're supposed to come tomorrow to donate an eleven-hundred-dollar check to the fire department for, uh, for, for that golf tournament. So I just kind of wanted to announce that, let everyone know.
Much appreciated, we, we will be able to...
The same money goes specifically to the fire department?
Really?
I'm just saying, it's your margin for error.
It's your margin for the fire department, yeah.
I promised that it was for, uh...
Well, I have no additional comments tonight, I wish everybody a great Thanksgiving, Councilor Wilson?
Com, any comments? No, I have no comments, I want to wish everyone a happy holiday.
Well, Dan, I would watch you two say it.
Okay, and Councilor Spivey?
Uh, Chamber of Commerce did another, uh, s, uh, did a second installment of the Brews and Dingo's last night in Marty's G M. A smaller crowd, probably just because of the holidays and everything, but it was still a ton of fun. Uh, so, I'm sure they'll do it again, um, keep it on your radar, probably a few months down the line. Uh, just pay attention to the, uh, Chamber of Commerce's newsletter if you don't get it. It's all kinds of good stuff in there, not just what's going on in the chamber, but also our business community in general. Thank you.
All right. Would anybody like to take us into public hearing, or I'll go ahead and make a motion that we leave public, we, we leave regular meeting, go into public hearing? Do I have a second on that?
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Notice is hereby given that at its regular public meeting beginning at six thirty P M. on November twentieth, two thousand eighteen, in the Irandell City City Council chambers located one-one-twentieth Street, South Irandell, Alabama, three-five-two-one-zero, within Jefferson County, Alabama. The city council of the city of Irandell will hear comments from interested citizens concerning proposed amendments to the following sections of ordinance zero-one-dash-five-nine-eight, that's section three, uh, two-six, uh, which is related to fowl and livestock, and section three-three-nine, uh, related to livestock and fowl. And at that point, we open the floor for any comments as a good public hearing. Remember, you're commenting on your, either support or displeasure with the particular ordinance. All right?
Looks like you got one.
Oh, okay. Good evening.
Good evening. I want to get to talking. I don't really have a comment, I just, I, I, I don't understand, I guess I want to know why. Is there, help me, educate me as to the interest in this, I'm just not sure. I saw it, I'm like, what is, what is the interest and why? That's all.
Butch explains it a little while ago.
Yeah, Butch went over it just a while ago.
Oh, Dan, I'm so sorry, I just, I'm sorry, I had a known meaning.
Yeah.
Apologize.
I think you might have been asking as to why I was interested in bringing this forward, as just a concept in general?
Yeah, just...
Fair enough. Um, yeah, I, and if I may, Steve?
Please.
Okay. Um, Mount Brook, for instance, they allow this, they actually didn't really have any ordinances around livestock whatsoever. I mean, uh, around, around, uh, hens whatsoever. Um, it's something that younger couples are interested in doing with their children. I don't, I'm interested in doing it with my children. Um, there's, there's a group of environmentally, you know, um, aware people that are, just want to kind of have that as a feature of their life, you know, we're not talking about goats and, you know, cows and all that kind of stuff, but there, there's a group of people out there that are interested in this, and, um, some of them look at that as far as where they might choose to live. So, doing this puts us in line with a lot of our surrounding communities and hopefully makes us touch bit, um, a bit more attractive, plus we can bring our existing chickens out of the shadows.
Okay, but I mean, I guess I need to understand the environmental thing, I don't...
There's a subdivision that right off Overton Road about four years ago that has special, uh, ordinance, what was, uh...
It's a state mini farm.
Yeah. Uh, now, the homemade residence, a residence neighborhood, was built around, had chickens, and we had to, to do new, uh, buildings, or, what do you call it, which, uh, A-one, R-two?
And they, they have five late, and it's the same as this, this is, and this is only allowing it, then the R-one is only, you just shut it down.
Yeah.
But they... Have a certain rating, I mean, do you have zoning for that, or just, is it going to be a part of the R-one?
It'll be a part of R-one.
Oh, okay. I just, I, I just didn't understand.
The, um, the leftovers are good fertilizer, um, chickens eat bugs, um, it's just all, all in all, a good thing for people that are interested in it.
And this does not override any restrictions that neighborhoods, like my neighborhood, for example, has a restriction in their covenants that wouldn't allow this no matter what the ordinance says.
Oh, okay.
So it doesn't override anything...
So you can't have that in your neighborhood if you really do?
If there's not something that says otherwise.
Okay.
All right. Thank you. Any more comments? All right, would anyone like to close our session?
One thing we failed to talk about, um, and as we were deliberating that item, is, um...
Amount of dollars?
Yes, I was going to recommend that be forty, which is the existing fee for an accessory building.
How much?
Forty dollars.
So that'll be added in when we approve the agenda?
Yes.
Do I have a motion that we leave public hearing and return to regular council meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Now, would anyone like to try to approve the agenda? Excuse me.
I'm sorry to interrupt, but wanted to let you know, I'm requesting an executive session this evening to bring you up to date on a couple of legal matters. Uh, I would suggest that it be added to the agenda, perhaps even after public comments to the council, and that way the public doesn't have to remain all that way helpless to come out.
As the last item?
As the last item, so I would request that that be added to the agenda when somebody is about to recommend the agenda approval.
All right, I'll make a motion that the agenda be accepted as submitted with the following changes. Item number six, the amount be, uh, set at forty dollars, and after, uh, public comments to the council that we go into, uh, executive session.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And now, do we have any additional public comments on agenda items only? All right? If not, Councilor Spivey, would you like to pick up with the first agenda item?
Absolutely, um, make a motion that...
Chief, I'm sorry. You got this one?
Um, I guess I wanted to, um... I, I was trying to make sure, I'm sorry if I'm late, I didn't want to disrupt everything, but has, have we had any discussion about the budget already? Have we talked about that?
I don't know.
About an hour.
Okay.
Have we?
Okay, I was trying to make the meeting, I knew I was going to make the pre-council meeting, okay, so we've already had those discussions.
Yes, ma'am. All right, Councilor Spivey, you would?
I make a motion for the, that, um, that resolution twenty-eighteen R fifty-eight that approves the fiscal year twenty-nineteen general fund budget for nineteen million, thirty thousand, four hundred dollars be approved.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Okay, Councilor Spivey?
I make a motion that resolution twenty-eighteen R fifty-nine that approves the fiscal year twenty-nineteen water budget for one million, eight hundred, fifty thousand dollars even be approved.
Do I have a second on that? Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Okay, now...
I'll make a motion that the resolution twenty-eighteen R sixty be approved.
This is one of the several that I recommended that you go through the procedure to immediately consider it, like you would ordinance.
To get it considered, read. So basically all...
I'll make a motion that resolution twenty-eighteen R sixty be considered read.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
All those in favor?
Of course, yeah.
This is just read?
Yes.
Just read, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right?
I make a motion that all rules that prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of ordinance number twenty-eight, uh, excuse me, resolution twenty-eighteen R sixty be suspended in unanimous consent to give us said ordinance.
Do I have a second on that motion?
Second.
Can you, Councilor Spivey?
Yes.
Councilor Bearden?
Yes.
Councilor Wilson?
No.
All right, we got to bring it back next time.
Bring it back.
Please vote, please.
Councilor, first, you already won. Okay?
Yeah, I want, I want to continue. I'm sorry.
Change?
Yes.
Yeah. Yes, I'm sorry.
All right, I'll make a motion that, uh, resolution number R, sorry, twenty-eighteen R sixty be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Second on that?
I make a second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
All right, motion carries. Okay. Councilor Wilson, you want to pick up the number four?
Yeah, it'll be a resolution, yeah.
Now, this is...
We're doing that like an ordinance, excuse me.
I'll make a motion that, uh, resolution twenty-eighteen R sixty-one be considered read.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, okay.
I'm, I'm make a motion that, uh, all rules that would prevent the immediate adoption and consideration of ordinance, a resolution twenty-eighteen R sixty-one be... of resolution twenty eighteen R sixty-one be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said resolution.
Okay, do I have a second on that?
Second.
Okay, second. Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor?
Yes.
Yes.
Counselor Wilson, yes. Uh, myself, no.
You gonna stop it there?
Can they come back?
Yeah, I think we keep going like we used to.
Got the unanimous on that.
It has to be unanimous to be able to move to the next step.
My case, it's no.
You have it, we have?
Okay.
Have to be part of that.
Okay.
Have to come up to the next council meeting.
Okay. And next one, Counselor Wilson?
All right, I'll make a motion that, uh, resolution twenty eighteen R sixty-two be considered red.
Do I have a second on that? Second, okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
I'll make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consider, immediate consideration and adoption of resolution twenty eighteen R sixty-two be suspended and unanimous consent be given for immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Okay, I have a second, second on that. Okay, Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson? And myself, no.
Can we do that, since there?
Counselor Spidey, on the order that you're gonna carry, carry forward, or?
I'll make, uh, I'll make a motion that resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two be considered red.
Second.
Second, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you.
I make a motion that all rules that would prevent the immediate consideration and adoption of resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two be suspended and that unanimous consent be given for the immediate consideration of said ordinance.
Do I have a second?
Second.
All right, Counselor Spidey?
Yes.
Counselor Bearden?
Yes.
Counselor Wilson?
Yes.
Myself, yes.
Finally, I make a motion that resolution twenty eighteen dash twenty-two be fully passed and adopted as introduced. Sorry, ordinance, this now. Uh, be finally passed and adopted as introduced.
Second.
Second, all right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed, all right, thank you, motion carries. And, uh, do we have any general comments from the board?
Um, I just wanted to thank everybody for their prayer, their prayers and their concerns for Connie and Mike during the, uh, hunt. They've been going through. Uh, I don't know if all of you know or not, but he had to go back last week and have his stuff revised above the knees. So now he's, has double amputation above the knees. Uh, he's doing great, he, um, is at home and he's planning to come to our house on Thursday for Thanksgiving. Would y'all continue to please pray for him? He's having some emotional problems, which you can understand that. But the man that builds the prosthesis came and talked to him and put his mind at ease. And the, uh, prosthesis has, has grown by leaps and bounds and they will, uh, put him on him and program him on a computer and he'll be able to walk. If he wears long pants, you won't even be able to tell that he has artificial limbs. But please continue to pray for him, thank you.
Yeah, I just wanna make a quick announcement, just want to, uh, send out kudos to one of our own, uh, students in the Irondale community. Uh, I received a letter from Civil Scarborough, her daughter Olivia Scarborough. She's a middle school student here in Irondale, uh, in Irondale. Uh, she has been selected to perform at the pre-game performance as part of the select group of cheerleaders and dancers chosen as all Americans doing a varsity spirit summer camp all across the country. Well, to make a long story short, because this is a long, uh, random that I received, but she's been chosen to perform at the Citrus Bowl, at the Citrus Bowl in Orlando, Florida. Uh, basically, she's looking for any kinda donations that she can, uh, receive to, uh, make this happen, uh, for Ms. Olivia. And, uh, she would appreciate if she can get some support on this. Uh, I have the information if anyone is interested in helping, um, Ms. Olivia to make this dream come true. Uh, I have the address and a telephone number where, um, her mother, Civil, can be reached if anybody wanted to reach out to her and help her make this dream come true for. Thank you.
If I'm correct, she's sung at the nine eleven memorance before, and she's also sang at the Christmas parade.
She also sung at the Spring Fest, I'm sure.
Okay, got you, just wanna make sure I have the right name.
She's sang at this, uh, singing in Irondale before too.
Yeah, she sure has.
Uh, do I have a motion that we leave regular council section and go into executive section?
Make a motion, relieve regular council meeting, go into?
I submit a motion to lease, one of those on record.
Okay. Do I?
Yes.
Stay private.
Thank you. We have time, cheers.
Give me one, Jim?
Uh, it's out there.
I have a quick question for Leslie. I guess at our last work session, the issue came up where, uh, we talked about parks, our last part of the week last week. Uh, we talked about the liability, uh, of the city. If anyone, uh, comes or any entity or whatever the case may be comes and want to lease some of these fields, uh, can't they sign a whole harmless agreement or any kinda waiver?
Absolutely, I would recommend that there be a written agreement between the city and any entity that you wanna work out arrangement like this with.
Okay.
That requires insurance, notification.
That's gonna say that we're required as an organization to have insurance on each thing.
But from a city standpoint, I, I don't want the city, and the, the conversation came up as far as the city being held liable for anything that happened out there if we were to lease any of the fields out. So as long as we?
Anything like, that, that any agreement that you enter into include language such as that.
Okay.
A lot of other topics that I would wanna see addressed as well.
Okay.
And I would also suggest that you not enter into any kind of arrangement like this without there being that agreement that was, that, that pivotal document.
That's what I thought.
Set all of that out.
Okay.
And I don't want it to interfere with our kids playing along with the fields.
That's what I thought, okay.
Do you have a question?
What would be the appropriate funnel for this to get it, uh, considered? Since this is not something bringing it up tonight, put it down.
We can look at, submit a request to get it on the agenda.
Well, I think the council needs to discuss, it's city property. So I think it's, the council needs to discuss this particular issue.
That's right.
With Counselor Bearden with his concerns, so, um, that'd be something that we need to, we need to talk about. Instead of just adding to the agenda.
I just suggest that they can submit a request to add on the agenda, which gives you the, the privilege of discussing it together as a group.
Are we gonna move forward with park and recs, the city employee managing the calendar?
That's a good question.
Okay. That's one thing we really haven't finished the conversation on.
Yeah, I didn't mean to be flustered.
No, you're fine, I understand what you're saying.
We need, we need to get together with the, uh, the, uh, baseball team, or who's, uh, sit in, uh, in charge of that so that they, we don't interfere with, with our kids playing.
So at this point, again, just having it on the agenda for the next meeting to bring up the discussion? Do we need to refer it to parks and recreation for consideration for them to make a recommendation? Uh, where do we go from here?
I think we need to get a contract from our lawyer and have Frank come in and, and tell us, you know, what needs to be done so that we can get all our, our ducks in a row before we decide what to do.
Uh, I think, I mean, that's, we need to know what our potential liabilities are before we try to draft a law.
Yeah, we don't need to draft a contract when we don't even know if you're interested in doing anything. I think you need to have a discussion at your next work, work session and, and decide at some point from there on what, what, what you want to do.
Can you?
We've had multiple ones of these, uh, requests, Frank gets calls every week.
That makes several calls.
Yeah, so, I mean, it's your, your responsibility to decide which direction you wanna go in and then either lease it or tell the city, tell me on behalf of the city that we want you to manage it and do it. Uh, it's a weight in your direction, but we don't need to, we don't need to spend attorney time on drafting a contract until we know where we're going.
Can you, can you come back at our next council meeting with the draft of what you want and what you expect?
Yes.
Okay.
No, no, we're, we're not gonna decide on it during next council meeting. We're gonna have a discussion about it during the next council meeting.
Right, well?
Which hopefully will be the next council meeting.
But they can, they can submit their proposal and have that?
So we know what they want, instead of, you know, a one paragraph.
Yeah.
When they want it, we can, uh, like, see specific dates and times.
Okay. So that would be the first?
What fields are gonna be used and so forth.
So, December fourth officially, and pre-council's at five thirty, regular council's at six thirty. The actual, just, any decision made will be at the six thirty meeting, but there will be discussion potentially at the five thirty meeting. All right? Thank you. All right, now, we had a motion on the floor and I do believe we had a second. Okay? I hope it's not for somebody else.
Oh, yeah.
And then it won't be long, I promise you. Uh, one of the things I wanted to do was to thank you since our year is almost ending. I just wanted to thank you for your support, the information we get at our meetings from our council people, from the people that come to our meetings and have to side with questions that we have. Uh, we appreciate you and I'm sure there'll probably be a formal way to say that, but, um, it's, it's really been a good help. But I do have one issue that I promised I would bring up, and that was the, uh, several of our neighborhood members have, have called and posted, uh, to the, the website, a problem on Dresden with the pothole. And they haven't gotten any response yet. And they said it's so bad that it's tearing them cars or whatever the case may be, so if you would look at that.
They should have filed it.
Was it posted on the news?
Yeah.
Was it on the website?
Yeah, they said they posted on the website, they've talked to people and they just haven't gotten anything done, I'm Dresden.
If you, if you will use that or send an email to Frank, we do not monitor, we don't make no representations that we monitor Facebook.
Not Facebook, no, I said website.
I understand, and we did, but then those go automatically to Frank.
Have you got anything on website? Okay, okay, well, I just wanted to, I told them I would make that, they said that, uh, Liz Frieda said she, she submitted those, so maybe she's not doing it correctly, we'll find out. But she said she's done it, this is the second or third meeting we've had to talk about that part.
We, we, I can tell you, we're talking to them as well.
You don't get, okay, okay, well, then we'll have to make sure we get them to you because we've had, this been going on for like three or four months, we've had it as a, as an issue. And I wanna thank you, Howard, you've worked out the, the problems we've had with all those cars and stuff. So you, you've really made a difference in our neighborhood, we wanna thank you.
Thank you. Missing anybody else, grab a round of my head.
You have a Russian before.
And I can certify that the executive session is allowed under Alabama law for a legal matter that is, uh, to discuss in executive session. I expect it'll take twenty to thirty minutes.
Okay, and that means you're welcome to stay as an audience, but basically what we'll be doing is going into executive session, leaving the room, coming back in to basically adjourn. But you're welcome to stay, all right? At this point, we still got a second, we haven't had an official vote?
Yes, to executive session.
Here, all in favor, all opposed, thank you, we'll go to our next session, thank you.